I will call the order of the regular board meeting. I set them on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of July 21st, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Tammy.
Of July 21st.
One second.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion on that?
Couple things. The correspondence, is all the correspondence like the letter that I read and there was another something? Questionnaire audit, that all gets attached to the official minutes, correct?
It is all in the binder.
Perfect. Under Castleberry Fairs. On the third page. One, two, three, fourth line down. Has been held in Lincoln since 1992 due to new outside seating areas. If we could add the word new. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? All those in favor of approving the minutes with Tammy's suggested edits? Signify by saying aye.
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 And abstain because I wasn't here. Next up is correspondence. I think the whole board received some correspondence from the athletic director, Mr. Manning, about the use of the front field for the for the fair. And I guess we can address that. I think it's on the agenda anyway, so we can address that at that time.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to remind the board that the New Hampshire School Boards Association Delegates Assembly is October 16. Tammy is your representative, so she will be going to that. But you also got a list of continuing resolutions for 2021. So what you can do is if you go through that and those are fine, you do it. If you have any other ideas that you would like Tammy to bring forward at the delegates assembly in October, you could just email Tammy. It typically is in January, but this is the first time they switched it to October due to weather conditions.
They recommend that you all read through all the resolutions. Can we discuss it as a board? But we'd never have and I mean, it's if you have any, I mean, read through it, obviously. If he has anything to bring up, we can do it the next board meeting. And if not, then go on.
Okay. So if you want, we can, I can, we're gonna put this on the agenda the next time and everyone can have time to look at them and you can discuss them at the next meeting?
It's some riveting reading.
Thank you for suggesting that.
You also received a note from the Castleberry Fairs in stating that thanking you for letting them use the field. That's it for the communication correspondence.
Business administration's report?
Let's see, we have, right now, we're focusing on the ester funds in the projects that are moving forward. You have approximately close to 700,000 coming in on the SO3, which we're looking at the HVAC system of a middle high school for that. So that's a little bit different. That's going to be a little bit different than the process. It's going to be a different process than the elementary only because we're using federal funds. We have to comply with certain rules and regulations. We are moving forward with each component area of the ester funds as we bring them forward to the Department of Ed. They've been giving us approvals immediately and coming back so that we can finish some of our paperwork. So we're not doing all the paperwork all at the same time. We've been filling out many forms and getting all the documentation. We've had a lot of meetings with Wayne Phillion in moving forward with the high school. The elementary project will be moving forward, putting out the bid for January. The high school will take a little bit longer. We originally thought that we could start the high school the same as the elementary, but because of the federal process of procedures that we need to follow, it's more complex than that. So we're going to, Wayne suggested moving forward with the elementary. And then if we need, monies are needed, more monies are needed for the high school as Wayne is suspecting maybe the situation, then we will put whatever monies is needed for the difference in the for the school district, for the community to go on. And hopefully by then, there may be some other federal monies available. So we will certainly, whatever's out there, we will certainly move forward and try to get that. Opportunity. So that's it. Now, if you want to continue, we're right on your.
Oh, Jesus. Sorry. I had a little lone tire on the highway today.
So we just talked about the ester projects and DOE and explained the process of following.
No, that was really it. Just at our meeting with the state and we were going through the process and the preapproval for all the other projects that we're working on for the 20% of the funds that have been spent on learning loss and now working on the approvals for the construction project and also, there's just so many steps along the way. We have to submit a plan on Monday, by Monday, on how, again, how we're using the funds. Because the DOE has to take all of these reports from each of the school districts and file a report with the feds. So they want to collect all the information now. So in three or four years later, they don't have to come back to us and make sure we did everything the right way. That's it. Besides, we have the best going on.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Let's see, I think that a lot of the stuff that we're trying to, I haven't reported on, it's going to be in the agenda. But we, our next strategic plan meeting will be August 26th from 4:30 to 7:30. And we had completed one. And the original timeline for this was going to be completed in August, but we had moved it out to October. So hopefully the strategic plan will be able to present in October, November. We haven't been too successful with getting any outside, you know, information. So what we're going to do is during the open house on September 15th, Tammy added anything, don't forget. On September 15th, we typically have our fall open house. What we're going to do is have the representatives from the committee have information to give to the public so that we can, you know, get feedback from them, some further feedback on them. We have received some surveys. We've sent out surveys. We have received some back, but, you know, due to the, you know, the summer months, you know, we haven't had too much of a connection with them. So we're going to try one more time at the open house. And that's usually a pretty good group of people, number of people that comes. So we should be, we should get some good feedback there. And service days are coming up. We start on the 24th, 25th, and 26th next week is when the teachers will be there. We do have staff coming in prior to that that will be in training. However, but for the most part, the staff will be coming, the teaching staff will be in, starting on Tuesday for those three days. And we have workshops on and set up. A lot of it is already set up by law. There are certain trainings we have to have every year. So one whole day is spent doing all of those trainings. And then another day there, the teachers are able to work in their classroom. And then we have one day where we can play catch up and get any moving forward information so that they'll be prepared for the following week. Let's see. Facilities project, we will come talk about with the facilities committee. Reading the elementary HVAC, that can go on that. And I have other, you know, people that I will be, that I will be mentioning under staff nominations, recommendations, and so forth. That's it. The rest falls in with your agenda.
Thank you. Committee reports. Brian says an update from facilities.
Sure. A couple of things to start, just update wise from Mark. Terms of the fair. He saw minimal impact according, in his opinion. He felt that it was a good experience and it didn't take much work for him. Project updates, I'm just jumping around my notes. This is the last one. The HVAC elementary will have to be in January and that's put together. Piping project is complete and it's waiting inspection. So that's all done and that, done and done. And then he just gave me some punch things that they've been doing through the summer, which is the dishwasher. Did some work in the kitchens, did some painting of offices, did some painting of stoplights, and they've just been staying pretty busy outside and chipping away. So the big one is the middle high school HVAC proposal, which did everybody get it and read it? Are we even? Okay, cool. So this is part of Deb's ester fund project. And what we need to do in essence is approve recommend moving forward with contracts in Wayne Phillion at said rates of 3,500 for phase one and the 105 for phase two. The money's not coming out of anything. It just allows Deb to go forward with, again, doing kind of what Judy had said. They need to sign this contract, send that off to the state. That will get us, like for her line.
And it's an allowable activity in the ester grant. The thing is, you know, so this is 105,000, say. So, but it's part of that whole
Sure.
seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, Wayne is estimating a little higher, as Judy said, cost for the project. So we're gonna need some additional funding. But this, again, right now, it is an approvable activity under AARP and ester funds.
So I guess what we're looking for, or what Judy and Deb are looking for is us to approve going forward with completion of signing this contract so that they can move forward with the state protocol so that the ester funds can be accessed.
If for whatever reason, we go through all this and then the town decides that they don't want to go through with the project, do we have to pay this money back or anything?
I would assume so.
I mean, they're not going to pay us until we've done the project. I mean, we have the grant, but they don't actually pay us the grant funds until we've completed the activities. So if, yes, if we spent the money on this, we would not get reimbursed.
Yeah, so we would pay, we would pay.
Yes, so this, yes, but.
I don't see that happening.
Yeah, I don't see the community saying, no, don't give us 700,000.
No, no, and we leave the air down there, but just, strange the things that happen. And I just wanted to ask the question. Okay.
So do you need a motion? I'll make a motion that we move forward with the contract with Wayne Phillion for the HVA system and the upgrades in the high school.
A good second. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Jeff. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I should change that to yet an association. Associate's not Wayne Phillion. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so that motion carries. Thank you.
So that, that's the big one for, that's kind of the big one.
Can we do some roof work this year?
Can you just update Jay on some roof work?
Yes, we completed the final section of the high school, which is 14,000 square feet. And now the oldest section of the high school is probably six, seven years old. So we got about 30 years to wait before we decide to do something else.
And maybe now's the time to talk about a
Yes, CIB.
CIB.
Yeah. We should just sit down and do it.
Yeah, maybe we can put that on the agenda for.
Did I afford you the towns CIB?
I mean, I've been doing a lot of research anyway. I don't, I don't know if I've seen the towns, but I've been just looking up the whole process.
I think it was me and Brian. Was it me and Brian on that, gonna be on that? Let's sit down with you and go.
Because there's a, I mean, we're finishing floors.
We can, pretty close. Avoiding floors.
Yeah.
This year finishing roofs, that hopefully it ends up being about the same amount of money as both projects for the last couple of years. So like, if we go forward with finishing the floors, it would be as though we did the same thing we did with floors and roof in the past years. But would be closer to finishing the floors. So just do roof, do floors.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like, we have two long-term projects that are coming to close. And we're gonna have a period of time where we're not spending that money. If we can start saving for them.
Yeah. Deb, I'll call you in the morning and we'll figure it out later. Get going on that. Okay.
Any other committees meet?
Did you want to talk about a wellness committee?
Sure. So we talked about the family resource fair that we did at the open house two years ago. Deb, did we do it last year? Or did we have handouts last year? Can't, can't recall that. But, so we talked about what we can do for that this year. And sent an email out to Linwood staff so that they can get information ready for different clubs. So we can present that to parents. We also talked about community engagement. We did have community members be a part of this in the past, but we're unclear at this point due to whatever restrictions we will have to follow because of the pandemic. We also talked about, started talking about, I guess there's going to be a wellness rotation in the high school schedule. So once a month, there'll be a wellness block. So we started talking about what those could look like. And I think that was about it.
Thank you. Wraps up committee reports.
I do have another committee.
Oh, sorry.
Negotiations need two people for the negotiations. Did we already? Okay, so. So I guess we're trying to figure out what, what days would be good, what times would be good. I think they're gonna look at the four o'clock session again. So we certainly don't have to make it up now, but, but, you know, between the two of you, just let me know and contact you.
When, starting in September?
Yeah, September. If we could do September, that would be good. Again, the strategic plan committee will be meeting on August 26th. And that was it for the committees.
Okay, thanks. Staff nominations, recommendations, resignations?
I have a staff nomination, Robert Soccher for special ed teacher. That's a nomination.
So we need board answer on that?
Yes, you do, please.
I'll take the motion to accept the nomination of Robert Soccher for special ed.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have, is there any further discussion on that?
Was he the one that worked with the students that we're learning remotely last year? I recognize the name, but I couldn't, they came together, yeah.
I think there were reviews on him from that. Yeah. Okay, if there's no further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the nomination of Robert Soccher for special ed positions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Say nay. The motion carries.
Okay. We had two, I'm gonna, I'll do the resignations first. Two resignations for paraprofessionals. Was Jenna Allen and Brianna Fairbrother? If you could accept those resignations.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations of Jenna Allen and Brianna Fairbrother with regret.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor, or I'm sorry, is there any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Disposed?
Okay, now I have two recommendations for paraprofessionals, Madison Moore and Cheryl Peltech.
I'm making a motion to accept the nomination for Madison Moore and Sharon Peltech.
Is it Sharon or Sharon?
Sharon.
Cheryl. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries.
Okay, and just for information for the board, you have Sarah Cross as an assistant coach for varsity's girls soccer. You have Heidi Corey for coach for middle schools girls soccer. You have Heather Curl for assistant coach for middle girls school soccer and Dance Pickering for varsity softball.
How lucky are we? Absolutely fantastic. Yeah, okay, super.
And that's it for me for that one.
Thank you. Sergeant Family Penney Historical Society Scholarship?
Yeah, so what that is, so we have two scholarships, this one and then another one that was established last year, the Kindman Scholarship, that are held in private trust funds under the school umbrella. So since they're private trust funds, the process for that, when they were originally established, is you don't have to have a public hearing like you do with the public trust funds, but you have to have an agenda item to expend the money. Now, these are all scholarships that the seniors earn at graduation. But in order, because it's in a trust fund, we give that paperwork to the trustees of the trust funds and then they'll send the money to the colleges or whoever.
So they've already been awarded. We just need to motion and make it legal and have it in the minutes. Do you have amounts on those or do you just need? Oh, Jenny has them.
Yeah, it's 250 dollars. Okay, so this scholarship request came in, again, so the students have to bring it once they meet the requirements. So after they've attended, a lot of them, you have to attend at least a semester or sometimes a year of college. So this is kind good and it's 250 dollars.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one.
I'll make a motion that we expend out of, which one is it? This, oh, one, Sergeant Family Penney Historical Society Scholarship. The 250 dollars, it was awarded to kind good.
Thank you, Tammy. Disagreed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed? And then motion carries. I think we already took care of the engineering service agreement with HVAC. And then Castleberry Fairs and Festival Site Use Request for Columbus Day Weekend. And that's the same outfit that.
That just. And the facilities committee discussed.
I think probably now's a good time to bring up. I think we all received a copy of the letter from Athletic Director Manning about his concerns about the field usage and damage to the field usage. And I, I gotta be honest, I share that concern. I did see driving in this evening that there's sort of rather large ring of brown grass around the area. And I know that we've spent a lot of money over the past couple of years, sometimes against the recommendation of the budget committee on trying to get those fields up to passable condition for the students, the athletics. And I have some concerns about, I shared mass concerns about the, the damage to the fields. And particularly during soccer season, because this is sort of a high use time of year anyway for those fields. If anyone else has any thoughts on that.
I walked it yesterday, yes. And it looks worse than it is, honestly. Because I thought, oh, wow, it's gonna be a good divot, it's gonna be horrible. And then I walked out there, oh, it's really not that bad. It was less than I thought it was gonna be, honestly. I expected way more impact and it wasn't, honestly. And I do absolutely share the same concerns. However, it was not as bad as I thought it was gonna be, honestly.
Any remarks that it was minimal.
Yeah, absolutely minimal impact, in my opinion.
On the other side of that, we asked a lot of money from these town businesses and stuff, and this brings money back to them. So I, I mean, I think it's a give-give situation. Personally, I think, I mean, as long as, I mean, in the fall, we're not gonna have as much sunlight to recover. It's gonna take a little bit more to recover in October. Can it recover? Absolutely, of course it will. I still think we need to do this on an event basis and not just say, well, the remote, let's just see how this one goes, the next one goes. And if there's, if it doesn't recover after this one, then we'll address it then. I think I'm always devil's advocate. I play both sides of it, I just want, because I can definitely, coming from Mark's point of view, I've been there. Even after the yard sales from the tank. They've done, you come in the next day and go, oh, my God, the lawn is totaled. I just got it fixed. And it always comes back.
That's also the end of the year.
It always comes back. It always comes back.
If I can say something also, we don't drive on the grass, not even the golf cart. We just walk everything in and it was so hot. So it was gonna take a beating. But grass is very resilient. Even the marking paint that we use is chalk, spray chalk. We're very cautious and aware of that. This is coveted ground. We don't want to get, we are low impact.
I think, you know, from, in speaking with Mark, he was surprised at how well it held up. My concern is that Columbus Day weekend, of all the things we're talking about, right? Now, it's a three-day event compared to a two-day event. It is at a time when sports on that field are even more important. You have less sunlight to recover. And if it is bad weather, if it rains or if it's wet, it's gonna be, even worse, the amount of traffic, I mean, I don't know, you probably know that or can guess like how much foot traffic you would see in this August one compared to the Columbus Day one, I would assume is, I don't, 25% more, I don't know, just.
It's more. It's three days. It's more.
Oh, yeah. Well, okay, yeah, totally. So if, if weather goes south, we've got more people going through that. I think from what Mark has said, you know, the Castleberry Fairs has done an excellent job, great to work with, very cautious. But it's the amount of people that will be on that field and the recovery is gonna be even more difficult at a time when we really.
Definitely agree with the, the, I mean, that weekend is always a nightmare in town anyway. Just do with the amount of people.
I spoke with Chief Morris today too, because I was curious how traffic went and how his details were and whatnot. He said traffic is traffic, but they mitigated as best they could. And it's, he didn't see any major problems or issues with that this weekend. Well, I mean, it's, there was traffic. Of course, there's gonna be. Even without a fair, there's gonna be traffic. However, he did voice his concerns with the Columbus Day Weekend Fair. And his biggest concern was last year when there were no fairs. The tail of the snake, quote unquote, was beyond the headland. So the stop and go traffic coming west off the kank was beyond the headland. It was down the other side. That's where the traffic started. And that was without a craft fair in town. And that's where his concerns come from. He did say, however, if we do decide to have this craft fair, he will do what he has to do to make it work as best he can.
Also, the craft here gets people off the road. So it gets people, we're like a speed bump. They're going up to see the foliage and they get stopped and walking around town for dinner and enjoy the village and so.
Yeah, that was Joe's point. It brings in business to the businesses that do a lot to support the, the school, the classes, the events and whatnot.
Yeah. It's on the agenda tonight. Are we expected to make a decision about approving it for tonight?
They have to so that she can get her ducks in a row to make it work for her in October.
Yeah, I mean, I, geez, I kind of wish we had at least a little bit of time to see how quickly the field recovers before we, or having to make a decision because.
We could make it a two-day event in October.
Two-day event instead of a three-day.
Also, could we move some of the vendors to like the parking lot?
No, we have to keep it on the one area.
Well, no, I mean, our parking lot.
Well, that really wouldn't, you know, lower level and then go up into the parking lot. We need the parking area. So it's easier to get them off the parking lot.
Right. The thing is, we could split it somehow and save some of the.
There's an athletic event, that weekend, correct?
Is there? Well, that's gonna take up parking.
The fall ball.
Was it the?
Really? In the backfield.
The jammer either?
No, no, no.
And fall ball, Mark Crippenout had mentioned it at the last.
Yeah, that's right too, and so that's gonna consume some of the parking. What about, were there any of the homeowners association meetings? I know we, a whole lot of those, we've checked, is done that weekend, okay.
We also have permission to park at James Playhouse, so all exhibitors can park for their way.
Right, right.
Admittedly, you can park up here too, I mean, it's, this point you.
How was the parking? I mean, I was doing it on Sunday and it's.
We never, we never ran out of parking, it was never an issue. The police plan, the traffic pattern that came up, it actually blocked people from coming in, so they parked, we just parked across the street and walked across.
They only made them, there was, you could only take a right-hand turn, no matter which way you were going. So you had to be heading west in order to turn into the school. You couldn't come this way and make a left-hand turn, you could only make right-hand turns.
And it made more traffic, because we had to go faster and find.
And then turn around and come back and, yeah.
Not a great plan, but we're happy to work with whatever, whatever they allow, whatever they determine.
Not on the sports field, but on that, I don't know if that would work for what they're looking for, but do you expect the same amount of exhibitors for?
I do.
Not more?
Everybody wants to return, it was a great experience, even in the heat, Saturday, Friday Saturday was awful, Saturday was a bit better, I believe it was cloudy, but it was a hot weekend. So that hurts the grass too, but grass is resilient, it bounces right back. And we do these, we haven't done these fairs for 26 years, and unless there's a long period of heat wave, you know, we break it out and it comes right back.
Like a rain or something, yeah.
I've been, I had townspeople that have been to both events and they said they actually liked it a lot better over here on the grass, so that.
I heard the same thing.
Yeah, I heard the same thing too, but I only want, like, because you could pop right behind his.
Well, put him over there.
Good idea.
That's a random. They're all the way back, because that turns into the tree. Yeah, that's a memorial garden anyway, I feel like that included.
Yeah. What about using these parking lots? This back parking lot and this parking lot? And then saving the lower parking lot for parking?
Right.
That's something that could be done.
And then you get some off the grass.
But then we have.
But then you're not, then you don't have visibility, right?
I would rather use this parking up here for the baseball event out back, have them park up here and it'll get them right up, anybody's.
Do you wanna wait until the grass bounces back and so you can see, would you feel better about?
I was just looking at our next school board meeting, because we can't make the decision unless we're in a full-blown school board meeting.
Well, unless the weather is perfect, I mean, we're not gonna get a good indication anyway. Both are, it's gonna go hard. That's, grass is gonna come back.
So eight, September eighth could be our next meeting.
Of course it does, it comes back every year.
Which would still give you time, if we wait until the September eighth meeting, you would still have a month. Is that cutting it too close for you?
Well, everyone wants to return, so my option is in Northwood Stock or, that's what I have, we don't want those. We want to keep the Lincoln, Pratt Festival in Lincoln, so we really, you know, as soon as we know, I don't know.
I'm afraid if we wait till the eighth and then decide no, then you're, it's crunch time for you and you're, yeah, have enough time.
Yeah, I don't think.
I think we should make the decision tonight, one way or the other. Somebody needs to make a motion to just.
Yeah, well, I think we need to make a, the motion has to be affirmative, right?
A positive motion, yeah.
So we'll, we'll accept the motion to to approve the use of the field for Castleberry Fairs.
And that, that would be for the Saturday, Sunday, Monday? Kids are in school and.
We set up on Friday after school, is that?
Kids, so it would have to be after, what do we have for sports, like practices or anything on Fridays? It would have to be after kids are gone, after all sports practices and, I was just pulling in, they were finishing up at six o'clock, so it may not, it may be six o'clock.
Okay. Be out there on the deck, I'm not sure of the time, but yeah.
Right, it would have to be after all kids have left campus, all sports practices were over and whatnot. So I'll make that motion.
So the fee is?
It's $5,000 for the three-day event, correct?
$4,000 and then $500 for the seven days, so it's total $5,000.
Do you want to clean that motion up for you or are you all set?
I, I will.
Okay, you'll clean it up for me, thank you.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, thanks, Joe. Any further discussion?
I don't know which way I wanna go.
I, I just have to, I'll say that I think that we probably shouldn't, given the season, and it's not anything to do with how things went this time. And I'm just concerned that the, during that, it's sort of a busy season, a lot of, there's a lot of sports use on that field. And we have, we have expended a lot of money and a lot of effort in trying to get our fields to a point where they're good.
Last year, these businesses lost a lot of money and it just helped them regain some.
I mean, that's, that's my position, I mean, it's.
If there was a parking lot out front, it would be a no-brainer, but it's a field.
And we have eighty exhibitors and about seventy of them rent condos, cottages, hotels and inns and bed and breakfasts.
Absolutely.
We're not, we're not all local, we live an hour and a half away from here, we're mostly New England now.
I'd like to see it stay and sometimes, you know, the big sample places to do that. If, if this meant that it stays, but gives us a year to help them, we have plenty of people in town that could potentially help find another location. Or maybe the COVID rules will end and the field in front of One Love can go on to the town again and become useful. You know, just to, I hate to see it, because of, basically, it's because of issues that are beyond our control that started eighteen months ago, that are gonna change things, you know, and that's where I see like difficulty in it.
I don't know if I see One Love giving up that outdoor seating though, now that they've put all that money and effort into building that and it's, and it's great. So I don't know if they're gonna retract that once the pandemic is gone.
No, it doesn't.
It falls under, it falls under a guidance from the governor to allow outdoor seating and to be used in public spaces, which expires this October.
Correct.
He extended it through this summer to give businesses an opportunity to still serve in, say, Fort Smith and areas like that on sidewalks. But once that expires, which it expired last winter, he extended it for this summer to give businesses an opportunity, but it's utilizing lands that don't belong to them.
Even though the governor extended it, it's still up to the towns to approve it.
Yes.
Selective approved all the existing outdoor seating areas for this summer due to the pandemic only. So once there's not, that need isn't there anymore, they're not gonna be out there anymore. The patio directly beside their building, they will always have, but that outdoor seating next to the gazebo will not remain indefinitely.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ashley, aye, Joe, aye, Tammy, nay, Kevin, nay, aye, Brian, aye.
Jasmine?
Jasmine?
Nay.
Nay? So the motion fails. See anything on new business or business or future consideration?
That's it, they can't ask for a two-day event, would they consider two days? Where we're not there for the Monday and you get an extra day to, you know, make sure the grass is better for your.
I was voting on two-day because you had suggested that.
Oh, the motion was specifically for three-day after school, after all students left the grounds on Friday and then Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
I don't think that changes, that would change my position on the, on the motion.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right, then. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Any, I don't see anything on the business agenda, so let's skip over that. Continuinging business, Town of Lincoln, Denise Hardey and Pleasant Street Eastments.
Yes, what we have now is we have a communication between three attorneys. We have the Town of Lincoln, we have the school district, and we have Hardey's attorney. And they're trying to identify the document they need in order to move forward to the state to get it approved so that it's very clear cut, so that nothing can happen or change or whatever.
They, who do you supply the documents still?
Um, still Hardey.
So we can move forward with the town's.
Yes, I did ask that question.
Okay.
And so I'm waiting for that answer.
Because that was approved years ago and again, last year, it just needs to be signed and recorded.
It's our, it's our rubber stamp.
Exactly, yeah, we just need to sign it and then give it to the town so they can go over and record it, we need the official vote.
So I did move that question forward, I'm just waiting for.
Because we can get that done and out of the way, and then it's just waiting for Denise Hardey to finish her paperwork that needs to be done and whatnot. She's also in a time crunch too. Part of this whole thing for her is, is splitting that lot back into the two separate lots that it was. When the state did the voluntary mergers, so all these joint lots are pushed into one piece to save people money on taxes, was the theory. December 31st of this year is the deadline, once you go, you can't, if you wanted it put back into two or however many pieces it was, you needed to do that prior to December 31st of 2021. So after that, she's not gonna have the option, and it's not that she can petition the courts and go, it's, she will not have the option, because she doesn't have the square footage to do that. So there's a time crunch for her, she needs to get her ducks in a row. I hope she realizes that there's that time crunch.
Yeah, I can want to know that as well.
So we wait. Superintendent Evaluation, we wait. It's fine, I actually, I'm not gonna tell you who gave it to me, but.
We won't let anybody know either, we'll be Brian.
So I'll now take those and sort of put them all together for you, and we can talk about that, and eliminate. COVID-19 reopening plan.
Yeah, the reopening plan, as I said, is scheduled, we're gonna schedule that for August 25th, which is Wednesday at 3:00. Now, we do need a board rep for that.
What is it, when is it? August what?
August 25th at 3:00.
I can do that. I had spoken to Kevin and told him that I was going to nominate him for that position.
Absolutely.
So I.
Does it have to be approved after that?
It's just that. That's a reopening committee meeting, right? My, yeah, my, my concern is we have a letter that went out to all students that said that masking is going to be an option, a choice for families. And I was under the impression, based on what was represented to the board in the spring, that we weren't gonna be making any decisions on that until the reopening committee had an opportunity to reevaluate where we were virus-wise, community transmission-wise, and to evaluate the guidance that was available prior to opening. And then I, you know, we get the packet in the mail that a decision has been made on that. Without any input from the board or from the reopening committee, I think it's, I've gotten a lot of calls about that and a lot of.
How can we make it optional for students that haven't been vaccinated? The CDC has never changed their stance on that, if you're not vaccinated, you are recommended to wear a mask. We have an entire elementary school full of students that can't be vaccinated, so they're gonna have to wear masks.
Well, well, according to what the governor had said in the spring, that, that's what we went by now. That, I, I still stand, you know, the district would still stand on making sure that, you know, the board has to make this decision. You know, so, so as close to school as possible, because you never know, one day from the next, so.
But did you already send letters out to students?
We sent, because that's the current plan, the current plan is still in place.
That was based off of the.
Correct, so what we have to do now is determine if, if next week, based on the most updated report from DHHS and, and the governor and whatever, that we need, that's why we have to have the committee meeting.
Can I ask a question? Did you say it's, it's a board decision?
Well, the board in the past has been, has been approving these plans prior to going to the state.
Well, that's not entirely true, because the decision to pull masks three days before school ended was made individually by somebody, not by the board and not by the reopening committee.
So if, if the reopening committee is meeting on the 25th and the school starts on the 31st, my assumption here is that, you know, the reopening committee meets and makes a recommendation.
You're gonna have to have another board meeting, like they did before.
Between, between the 26th and the 30th.
Right. I may have to have a board meeting next, next Wednesday, you know, if we have a 3:00 meeting for the committee.
Well, the meeting, the committee meets on Thursday, right?
No.
Oh, it's Wednesday.
Oh, it's Wednesday.
I said 26th. Oh, thank you.
And that's fine, you know, we've just, we have gotten guidance from, we've gotten guidance from the CDC, who's recommending universal masking for elementary schools, American Pediatrics is, Pediatrics is also recommending masking.
It's not just elementary schools, it's all students, K through 12, yeah.
And we, we've just recently received new guidance, sort of the reopening toolkit from DHHS here in New Hampshire, with more specific, sort of county by county or even sort of region by region, or at least the ability to look and see if, you know, we can safely make masks optional. Right now, all of the regions, the entire state of New Hampshire are at high community transmission. So the, the recommendation is universal masking. However, the, there's a rubric, a very easily interpreted rubric that allows you to look and say, okay, we have low community transmission rates, we have no, no thing, nothing going on in the school, we can actually ease, ease off on that. Or we can, depending on, you know, if there's issues in particular classrooms, we can address it then. But there's a number of concerns with regard to the, not just, not just sort of the, the risk of COVID, I mean, that is there, but there's also other impacts that shutting the school down has. So if we have an outbreak and we aren't masked, that, that requires, through our plan and through the state's recommendation, a much broader shutdown of classrooms, entire, you know, grades, there's, there's just more of an impact if there's cases in the school, where if students are masked, then there, then there's an opportunity to limit the impact of a case or a smaller, you know, cohort of students that have, are positive. We don't have to necessarily close the whole school down. I think there's a lot of the pandemic benefits, like paid family leave for COVID or school closures have expired and are no longer available to parents. People can't afford to miss work. I don't think anyone's looking for another year of, of sort of hybrid or home learning. I think, you know, we should proceed with caution, we have the guidance and we should use it, and I think it would be sort of, it's a little, I'm just, I was a little surprised to see the correspondence go out in the way that it did, prior to the reopening committee having the opportunity to, you know, look at the guidance that's there and make the recommendation. I'm hoping that that's going to happen meaningfully at the meeting and that we'll have an opportunity to have that discussion, because we do have reasonable guidance now, where, where, we didn't necessarily even have that at all last year, which was unfortunate, but I think we have some this year, we can use that.
Unfortunately, that lettering, I think, was a big mistake on the administration's part, where now if we vote the opposite and require masks because of the guidance and recommendations, it's gonna be hard. You know, a lot of people, well, we were told it was optional, it's gonna be difficult.
Yeah, yeah, but you know what, things change quickly, you know, you have your variants, you have, you know, all this information.
You and I know that, but, yeah.
And that guidance was good on July 1st.
Yes, exactly. Updated again on August 5th, I think, is the last update, so, I mean, it's been there for a while, it's, they've been, CDC has been recommending mask wearing for schools for two months now.
So is that who we go by?
Well, it's a combination, CDC, DHHS and the state guidelines and recommendations.
For this school year, what are they all saying?
Yes.
Too much more. But we do like a monthly email with our update, like, it might just be that the guidelines stay the same for the 1st of August, the 1st of September. the first of August, the first of September, the first of November, we just send out that same email that we're discussing right now, and it says, you know, at this time, as we do the things that happened the past thirty days, we're going to go X route. Or, you know, we're going to continue in the same route, so that there is just a constant, you know, just a monthly bulletin.
An expected, I'm gonna get an update.
Yeah.
My, my understanding is a lot of schools are, are implementing the plan in a similar fashion, where they basically have updates every three months or three weeks, review the, the new data, look at where we are with community transmission rates and where things are in the school, make a decision about whether to keep it the same or change the policy at that time. So I think it's easy enough to do, particularly with the guidance from the state that we're getting now. But, you know, I think we're we need to make sure that we're moving forward in a responsible way. So on the twenty-fifth, that the reopening committee has the opportunity to have a meaningful conversation about how we want to open up the school, and we're not sort of wed to the, to the information that's been sent out.
What time is that meeting?
Three.
Three.
Three o'clock. Where do you meet?
Um, probably in the high school multipurpose room.
There's a pretty big group of people, so.
That's why, that's why we need it, and that was why it's better.
It's an open meeting. A lot of us have been thinking that it needs to be open.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we can do-
Well, yeah.
How long is that typical meeting? Should we just piggyback it so that the people that are making the decisions and that can give us valuable information are just there?
Have a school board meeting.
Well, we have a school meeting three hours later.
Six thirty.
We're just taking-
Why don't we just have an hour later while they're still there?
That's what I'm saying. If we just, if it's, say, five, four o'clock, if everybody can-
Do they hold a meeting for an hour?
Is when our meeting is. But then, then the, the valuable people that made this, that have done this discussion are still in the room, and we can bounce ideas off them, perhaps.
They can, yeah.
Is it tied to an hour? I mean, reopening is a, yeah, it's a, it's a packet, so I'd be-
No, I don't think it's tied to an hour. I think what, like, Timmy was saying, is that then you're not waiting, like, we would just schedule to be there within an hour, like an hour later.
Yeah, we could notice the school, we could notice the school board meeting, so we could do that for four o'clock, and even if they're not done till four-thirty or forty-five, we can-
We just listen.
We don't have to start at four, as long as it's noticed for-
I mean, I, I, let's just, and then Jay will be, I don't know.
No, that's fine with me.
I mean, I think then, then all the plans are in the room.
Yep.
You know, because otherwise, there's gonna be, I think, a scramble for two hours to, to get the information, like, from Kevin to us.
Well, not necessarily, but I get what you're saying, and I agree.
I got nothing going on, so.
I'm good in four or six or-
So school board meeting for PM on the twenty-fifth in the high school multipurpose room? And we will be with the-
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in the gym or the multipurpose.
And we'll be with the reopening committee at the tail end of their meeting.
So do you think that? My concern is that if we're hosting this at the school board meeting, the school board meeting at four o'clock, you're gonna have, I would imagine you'll have the public show up, and we're gonna be, I don't know, halfway, three quarters. I just don't think an hour to go through a reopening plan that was updated in June, is it realistic to, that we're gonna make decisions and be okay with recommendations in an hour? I, I don't. I don't, this is my first time, so I don't think that's realistic. And then for the public to come in and sit there and, and jump halfway into a, a committee meeting, and then they're gonna be waiting for the school board meeting to start, I mean, that's public that are stepping away from their families to be here and and I, I guess in hindsight, I think it makes sense to, to do it at a time when families can participate if they care to. The school board meetings always start at six-thirty. I, I understand that the gap between, but maybe six. I, yeah, I mean, I think I-
Yeah, I agree with that.
Kevin, one v six?
Four's better.
Use the same room.
But then we're not gonna, well, it doesn't matter. We won't have the whole committee there.
Hopefully. Maybe someone will come back.
They're gonna wanna sit there from three till seven or eight.
Well, they're giving their input during their committee time. We're relaying it. If they, if they wanna be there and can be there, they can be there, but I think that we need to think about the families and the community members.
So the only thing on the agenda that-
So the twenty-fifth, I'm- This is the twenty-fifth at six.
Yeah.
Another thing that was brought up during the wellness committee was how realistic the open house is. Should we be inviting everybody in the community into the school where things are at right now? So that might be something that's discussed during the reopening plan as well.
As if the reopening committee needs anything else to think about, but that may make sense to happen.
Probably last year's plan was that no one came in the building.
Yeah, that is a, I mean, that is one of the components that they would be discussing, so that would involve anything, you know, any type of gambling.
I think that wraps up that agenda item at this point. Strategic plan, we talked about.
Yeah, I talked about that.
And S R funds, we talked about as well. I don't see any students, staff?
Hi, I'm Jackie, and it's really cool to be here in this position, so, um, sorry. Heather, if you'll ask me to report that the high school team will be hosting a lumberjack orientation for ninth graders, including new high school students able to attend. We're able to attend on August twenty-sixth from one to three. Our new student assistance person, Georgie Anne Callen, as well as Y L T A students will assist with outdoor fun and team-building exercises. I think this is the first freshman orientation that's ever happened.
Nice.
I think it's a good thing. Yeah. The middle school science department received approval to use S R funds to purchase a science curriculum that amplify science curriculum. We're excited. We're moving fast to get it here as soon as possible. Thank you, Debbie, for making that possible.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Community?
I just have one question. Marcella Chamber from Woodstock. In terms of the timeline, the, so if you meet regarding the reopening policy on the twenty-fifth, what, school starts the thirty-first. What is the timeline, or how would you notify parents of a change in the reopening plan?
We'll just send it out through all the-
The all call?
Yeah, I mean, that is like, we'd have a, the idea would be to have a decision for, for, you know, the, any change recommendations and then board approval on the twenty-fifth, and then that would be an opportunity for the stuff to get out to students before the start of the next week. So email or-
Yeah, email, all calls, Facebook, website, yeah, absolutely. Right? And you know if it's on Facebook, it's true.
Mark? No, all right.
You look tired.
I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Joe? Second by Ashley? And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I was gonna say nay. I said I was gonna say nay on the next motion to adjourn, just because nobody ever does.